Here's Anna Marcos with more.
Human trafficking victims are invisible if you don't know what to look for, and yet, you could find them anywhere: on street corners, often the unwilling victims of prostitution rings; in sweatshops, living in your apartment building; in homes, cleaning people's houses and taking care of children.
California is one of the top destinations, unfortunately, for trafficking.
Mayor Eric Garcetti and the Department of Homeland Security have teamed up to stop human trafficking in L.A. with the Blue Campaign, a program to help train the LAPD, the Port of L.A. Police, airport police, and workers in the Housing Department on what signs to look for in human trafficking victims.
Maybe it's a domestic worker in someone's home that you can see who never seems to be gone, doesn't have any time off. When you see people who are much older with somebody much younger in situations that don't look safe, or late at night, long after there would be curfews.
Some of the most common things to look for is when people feel nervous around the suspected, whom you suspect is a trafficker.
City leaders have no hard numbers, but they estimate there could be thousands of human trafficking victims in L.A.
There is a tremendous misperception that human trafficking is a third world problem, and nothing could be further from the truth. Tragically, it occurs in cities and towns throughout the country.
The problem is rampant in the north San Fernando Valley.
It's completely unacceptable. How do you have 13- and 14-year-old kids being trafficked for sex in the San Fernando Valley, and everybody turn a blind eye?
Pamphlets and flyers will soon appear at bus stops, at the airport, and other public places to give everyone the tools and knowledge to report and stop human trafficking in its tracks. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
Now, if you suspect someone has become the victim of human or sex trafficking, you can call the Department of Homeland Security at 866-DHS2-Ice. Well, won't it be nice once the L.A. River gets restored so we can use it for recreation? Well, restoration plans are underway, but part of the plan comes with a heavy price. As Gil Reyes reports, city leaders weigh the pros and cons of buying one stretch of land near Cypress Park.
I'm gonna be in there. Oh, that's so cute!
One key portion of the L.A. River Restoration Project won't come cheap: $252 million. That's the estimated cost of buying this land, with the environmental cleanups needed to turn the area into park space. But Councilman Mitch O'Farrell says it's worth it.
I'm hopeful that the rest of my colleagues will support this, so we can have the choice of actually helping create the vision for the river that we've all been working on for the past decade, several decades now.
The city considers buying 40-plus acres next to the L.A. River, known as the G2 parcel. It's where the old Taylor Railroad yard used to be. Decontamination of the soil would be needed to turn this area into park space for the public. Critics of the purchase say it's too expensive, but supporters say buying the land is crucial for the L.A. River Restoration Project. That's a plan to revitalize 11 miles of L.A. River to its natural state for kayaking, hiking, and preservation of native species. Supporters also say if the city does not buy G2, developers will, possibly spoiling what the mayor calls "the crown jewel" of the restoration plan. On the L.A. River, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
Now, buying the land alone will cost the city $60 million. The price is also expected to rise the longer the city waits. Over at LAX, if you're one of the millions of passengers who travels on international flights, well, the process just got a bit smoother. Rasha Goel has more on a multimillion-dollar connector which allows domestic and international passengers to move between terminals.
This long hallway is part of the Terminal 4 Connector, a new piece of the LAX Central Terminal area that connects the airport's south side, which is Terminals 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8, with the Tom Bradley International Terminal.
Not only is it going to greatly enhance security and convenience, but it's going to reduce the time it takes for our passengers to get to their flights.
The Terminal 4 Connector, a $148 million investment, saves time for passengers by giving them a direct post-security route between terminals.
International passengers with connecting flights would now be coming through this TSA screening area and would be easily able to access the south side terminals.
You see how quickly TSA screening can be when you have only connecting passengers and not the new passengers going through. So this was a major addition for this side of the airport. Domestic passengers no longer need to exit the terminals or be re-screened for TIBET, which saves a lot of time.
It's an area that's been put to good use.
What was here before this building arose was some open space, but also some temporary facilities that were very complicated to demolish and then to rebuild on top of, and to connect an infield to very important terminals.
It's the first non-residential building in Los Angeles under the green building standards to achieve Tier 2. That's significant.
Last year, the Tom Bradley International Terminal and the south side terminals had a combined 52 million passengers. That's about 70% of all the passengers who passed through LAX.
This investment means we're celebrating more today than just this terminal, but more jobs, more visitors, more chances to show that here in L.A., we get the job done.
The new connector is part of a $15 billion makeover that is being done at LAX, the nation's third busiest airport. At LAX, I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. this week.
Officials say the Terminal 4 Connector is a significant milestone in creating post-security connections between all LAX terminals. While heading now to Cal State Northridge, where students are the first to take part in an increasingly popular metro program that offers discount rates on metro rides, Gil Reyes has the details.
CSUN student Justin Kabanting saves time and gas money by using his Metro U-Pass instead of driving.
A great alternative to driving by myself, because it's an easy way to get around the traffic, and also being able to get to class on time.
The Universal College Student Fair Pass offers discount metro rates for CSUN students with eight units or more. A sticker with an electronic chip goes on student IDs. Simply swipe IDs like tap cards to go anywhere Metro goes. Stickers for CSUN students cost $95 per semester. No more driving to campus, paying for parking, or trying to find a space.
And we all know what it's like to go to school and see all these cars suddenly descend, single-passenger cars that make it difficult for the neighbors, make it tough for the students. That's why public transportation makes so much sense.
The two-year-old pilot program has become increasingly popular, recently signing up its 1,500th pass holder. Councilmember Paul Krikorian says it's a far different San Fernando Valley than when he was in school.
But I can tell you, when I was growing up here, this was hot rod culture territory. This was the place where people were committed to their cars. But we have changed that dramatically. When you look at the success of the Orange Line, when you look at the success of the Red Line, it's clear that the San Fernando Valley wants transit. The San Fernando Valley will use transit, and the generation of people going to this university, many of them may never own a car.
Definitely, I would say, take advantage of the U-Pass, because it is definitely something that is solely gaining momentum, and it's only going to get better as long as we continue to support.
Reporting from CSUN, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
L.A. Trade Tech and Pasadena City College are among several other campuses participating. Get your pass by logging on to metro.net and typing "U-Pass" in the search. While over in Hollywood, residents want change, but not too much. They voiced their concerns during a recent get-together with Councilmember Mitch O'Farrell as they tried to tackle some hot-button issues. Anna Marcos has more.
Want to know your city leader better and ask what he's up to in your neighborhood? Some Hollywood residents do. The United Hollywood Neighborhood Council is holding a series of conversations with its leaders, and today Councilmember Mitch O'Farrell is on the hot seat. Tops on the agenda: two initiatives to help regulate costume characters on Hollywood Boulevard and the Hollywood tour buses.
We're restricting where they can park day in and day out along the Boulevard. They load people in these buses, they sit in the sun for hours sometimes, they don't give them refunds, and then they go in these chop tops into the hills, and I don't want to wait until a bad tragedy occurs.
Another hot topic for residents: development. Many feel planned mega projects like a new Target store and a Millennium project near Capitol Records will ruin Tinseltown's character.
What is your position on spot-up zoning for projects such as the Target Building and the proposed Millennium project, which are out of scale to their neighborhoods?
I would argue that Hollywood doesn't need to go anywhere near the height of downtown Los Angeles ever. Hollywood is its own neighborhood with its own character. It will change. One thing that I know for sure is we need economic development and investment in quality projects.
Residents also want to know what the city's doing about affordability and housing.
Are there other plans to provide housing for seniors, low-income residents, and the Hollywood workforce?
Great question about the number-one crisis facing the city. We are pricing Angelinos out of being able to live in Los Angeles.
O'Farrell says he's got seven initiatives pending in city council on affordable housing, and several affordable housing projects about to come online.
He's obviously gotten very involved in Hollywood, has been for a long time, and I think that he was very forthcoming in his answers.
Even on the controversial stuff, whether it be Integrity Initiative or Millennium, you know, we may not agree, but at least I get a sense of who he is and why he thinks the way he does.
Traffic, homelessness, jobs, the list is long. Residents say they may not always see eye to eye with O'Farrell, but at least they know they've got his ear at City Hall. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
Councilmember David Rue has also been a former guest at the Conversation Series. Well, how does a free computer sound to you? Well, your neighborhood could be next in line to benefit from an innovative recycling program started by the agency that oversees this station. Gil Reyes has details from Van Nuys.
Nice to meet you. Congratulations.
Van Nuys Councilmember Nury Martinez hands out free refurbished computers to about 100 local families at the YMCA.
You know, the Y has done an amazing job in terms of programming and providing services for our young people, but the technology piece is what's missing. A lot of our families just can't afford a computer at home, or can't afford the internet. Very nice to meet you. Thank you for coming.
But today, families in need are getting up to speed. They'll be receiving free refurbished computers and a separate hotspot device, which comes with four years of free internet, all sponsored by the YMCA. It's all part of the city's Hour Cycle L.A. program. It takes outdated city department computers and fixes them for families in need. The idea comes from the city's Information Technology Agency, or ITA, the agency that oversees L.A. this week and Channel 35.
Anytime that you're giving a family, with children especially, an opportunity to get connected, to get online, to get homework done, to learn great things, it's always special, it's always unique. There's so many different great communities in L.A., and it's our pleasure to be able to help.
They mentioned you can do computer programming, like coding, and that's something I've actually really been interested in, and it'll be a lot easier now with a computer at home.
Hi, Ron. Nice to meet you. Thank you for coming. Hi.
You're very welcome.
Councilmember Martinez calls the giveaway an investment in solving problems in her district like homelessness.
We need our generation to be informed, knowledgeable, and have a good education to come back to communities like Van Nuys and help us fix, you know, some of these issues. Today, I want them to take away the message of, "Today, we gave you a computer. Somebody took a chance on you. Please pay it forward moving on, and come back to communities like Van Nuys and help it make it better."
In Van Nuys, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
City leaders plan to hand out more free refurbished computers to other communities throughout L.A. Low-income families in Baldwin Village, Koreatown, various public housing units, and senior centers. San Pedro and South Central L.A. have also benefited. In Panorama City, a group of new firefighters are ready to save lives as they join the elite team of the LAFD. They showed off their skills and celebrated at a recent graduation ceremony. Rasha Goel has more.
The age of 12 was my first introduction to the fire department, and it was actually my mom calling 911 for the first reason, or the first time, and she actually had a heart attack, and because of the work of the Los Angeles City Fire Department, she's still alive.
Luis Milroy, who as a young boy knew he wanted to become a firefighter with the Los Angeles Fire Department, was also recognized with the Top Overall Recruit Award at the ceremony, and for his mom, it's a moment she won't forget.
It's unbelievable to me that here we are, you know? It's the dream come true.
Forty-nine recruits joined the Los Angeles Fire Department after a 20-week rigorous training curriculum, and today they join together to celebrate their accomplishments.
But getting here has also been a lot of hard work and determination for the recruits.
We cover so many different things. It's hose-line operations, our ladder operations, emergency medical technician review, hazardous materials, urban search and rescue. The list of things that we cover is very extensive and very difficult.
Everything was pretty challenging, physically, mentally. We'd be here for 10 hours a day in the sun, working hard. We'd work out in the morning, and then come and do skills evolutions in the afternoon, and then they're studying when we go home at night.
In this year's batch, five recruits were between the ages of 18 to 22. Forty-one recruits were between 23 to 32 years old, and three recruits were between 33 to 37 years old. Among them are two Marines and one National Guardsman.
And after years of having no graduates, I'm so proud. While I've been mayor, this is the eighth class of firefighter recruits that we will graduate. It is important for us to have firefighters and to support them.
As the hats come off and the gear comes on, now is when the real work of putting out fires begins. In Panorama City, I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. this week.
Well, from a graduation ceremony to an awards ceremony honoring some of LAFD's finest, and here's something interesting: many of the department's top awards for excellence this year don't involve fighting fires, but they do involve bravery. Gil Reyes shows us.
LAFD engineer Darren Lair receives the department's highest honor, the Medal of Valor, for swift action in the pounding surf off the coast of Kauai, Hawaii last year while on vacation.
A young lady got swept off into the water, and I basically brought her out of the water, rescued her, and that's why I'm here today.
A packed house here at the Westin Bonaventure Hotel for the Los Angeles Fire Foundation's awards ceremony. Twelve L.A. City Fire Department personnel are being honored for going above and beyond the call of duty. Three dogs are being recognized as well.
Congratulations to members of the human remains detection team. Their keen sense of smell helped locate four missing bodies hidden beneath debris from a structure fire in the Westlake District in June.
As a human remains handler, it's kind of that balance you walk between being proud of the work your dog has done, but also knowing that that means they've found someone who's lost their life. But we take pride in knowing that we've helped get some closure for that family.
Another awardee, engineer Tyler Varnum, took over the wheel of an out-of-control fire engine when the driver fell ill and passed out.
It was a moving vehicle, yes. We were driving emergency to a call, and we hit a few things going emergency, and I was able to get up to the front seat and get that rig to stop.
Proceeds from the awards luncheon go to the LAFD.
We hope that this will yield some revenue that we can spend on equipment, technology, training, and youth programs for the fire department.
We have four firefighter magnet high schools now, so it buys equipment for those kids to learn how to become a firefighter.
So God bless our Los Angeles Fire Department, each and every one of you who has answered the call.
Going above and beyond. From the Westin Bonaventure Hotel in downtown Los Angeles, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
The Lifetime Achievement Award is also given to retired Assistant Chief Frank Borden. Borden is the father of community surf teams which have expanded nationwide. Well, free activities and food for young people and their families, job opportunities for local residents, and a safe place for Angelinos of all ages to spend Friday evenings. Rasha Goel has more on a program being kicked off at the Normandy Recreation Center.
Mayor Eric Garcetti recently kicked off Fall Friday Nights, a program to keep parks and recreation centers across the city open late with special activities for young people and families.
We're creating safe places for young people to be in, and this is the second year that we've taken our summer programs and pushed them into the fall for Fall Friday Nights.
We've extended the hours and added a lot of additional family programming and youth programming, and it's really just to get our youth and families engaged in our parks later into the evening on the weekends.
Fall Friday Nights is an extension of Summer Night Lights, a signature mayor's office initiative that just concluded its ninth year. It all started in response to a tragic shooting near a closed public park.
This began in Glassell Park, in a single park. When there was tragedy and we lost a young woman, a teenage girl who was walking with her boyfriend and who's no longer with us, because we had a park that was closed a block and a half away, where they could have been safe. So we started a program that summer called "At the Park After Dark", and then with Mayor Villarosa, we grew that to eight parks, and then 16 and 32 parks. And as mayor, this has been a core part of my work as well.
The program runs from September 23rd to November 10th, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. at night.
It's a lot of crafts, a lot of programs, sports, different leagues, activities, things like that, that, you know, kids of all ages and families could come out and participate on Friday night.
It also helps build a relationship between the LAPD and community.
That's really what our goal is for this community, is to make it where everyone feels that they're safe and can get together as families and bring the children out and have fun activities.
More information on Fall Friday Nights locations can be found at empowerla.org, a fun way to also get involved with your local community and give back. I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. this week.
According to officials, in 2015, 20 of 32 communities surrounding Summer Night Lights sites saw a reduction or no change in gang-related crime. Well, the city of L.A. welcomes a delegation from South Korea, a call for artists to create a new art project in Little Armenia, and an upgraded baseball field at the Toblerone Recreation Center is a home run for local kids. All these stories in City Beat. Mayor Eric Garcetti and Council District 4 Councilmember David Rue attended a luncheon for Mayor Byung-soo Sa of Busan, South Korea, hosted by sister cities of Los Angeles. Councilmember Rue says these kinds of visits help foster and strengthen relations between the two countries.
And our strength comes from learning from each other's and from each other's differences.
L.A. City Councilmember Mitch O'Farrell and the Department of Cultural Affairs are calling for artists to create a public art project at this corner of Hollywood and the 101 Freeway that will serve as the official gateway to Little Armenia, similar to this rendering of a gateway marker planned in Koreatown. The gateway will serve to acknowledge the contributions of one of the largest Armenian populations in the country. The budget for this project is $350,000, of which the selected artist will receive a stipend. For info on submissions, call 213-473-7013.
It's also an opportunity to beautify the area and highlight its significance at the same time.
The Department of Rec. Parks and Councilmember Gil Sidiyo recently celebrated improvements to the baseball diamond at the Toblerone Recreation Center. Improvements include a new backstop and an upgrade to the infield dirt mix. A new batting cage was also installed for baseball team training and practice sessions. The upgrades were made possible through a grant, which will also allow the Recreation Center to offer reduced registration rates in an effort to get more kids involved in sports in one of the city's lower-income areas.
I'm actually glad it did happen, because we were kind of in the need for a batting cage.
Have them come and practice, have them come and be responsible players, which will then turn them into responsible students, hopefully. Teach them about winning, losing, sportsmanship.
Well, turning 90 can be loads of fun if you're celebrating at the Griffith Park Boys Camp. Now, the camp program, run by the Department of Recreation and Parks, marked its 90th birthday with a free open house for all the kids. Anna Marcos takes us to all the fun.
Zip lining anyone? This was a chance to test your grit while getting some fresh air and a taste of nature. The Griffith Park Boys Camp threw a free family fun day for the kids to celebrate the 90 candles on its birthday cake.
This is a gem, a gem in our city, in the urban city, where many kids don't get exposed to the environment, get exposed to the wilderness, to know about their environment, and it's very important.
Since the '20s, the camp has been introducing Angelino children to the great outdoors. Here, they learned...[1477.13]
East of Mason. If you don't keep, in this city, you have to watch your neighborhood. Because if you don't watch your neighborhood and you don't defend your neighborhood, they would have torn down the rent-controlled apartment building that I live in years ago, except for vigilance. You must be vigilant. And be vigilant first in your own neighborhood. Don't worry about anyone else's. Stop them there. Okay, I like to go into my, you can, you know what?
If you could get the clock to one minute, Madam Clerk.
Thirteen, two fifty-nine, nothing works right. Zero ninety-nine, one minute. Tell you right now, Measure M, mula, 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 mula. If you put in, they need sixty-six point six percent. Even their own poll shows them at sixty-eight. This is the forever tax, a half percent forever. That's almost nine hundred million dollars for the first year. Then, a few years from now, it goes to one percent. They want to take, we have the highest tax rate for sales tax in America. All they want to do, there will be no cost overruns, because they will have money coming out of their asses at the MTA. Billions and billions of dollars to waste. That's why you must vote against Measure M. All we need is one-third plus one to kill Measure M. And it's all the rail construction companies that are putting the money into the commercials.
Thank you, Mr. Wass. Now, if I can get Mr. Previn. Mr. Previn, you have Item Six and public comment. So you get your one minute for Item Six and another minute for your general public comment. Mr. Previn?
Thank you, sir. It is Eric Previn from CD Two. Item number six is your typical REAP, the Rent Escrow Program. And there are a number of properties. I know that part of the idea of coming to Van Nuys is to address matters that come before the Valley, in front of the Valley, and that's a nice, that's a nice detail. So today, there aren't many, actually, that one could speak on. That's why we're signed up over here. This is not my area of expertise. But there is one from CD Seven, sir. And CD Seven, well, there have been some governance issues, as you know, that have arisen regarding CD Seven. And last night, it came to my attention that you've engaged a guy named Tony Wilkinson.
Stay on the item, Mr. Previn.
Well, Item One.
Six.
Yeah, but it's the twelve dash zero zero five dash S three three nine is the CD Seven matter. It's my understanding that he's kind of helping you out with some of the details over there. But he's not the caretaker, you're the caretaker.
No, why don't you stay on this item?
All right, well, this is the item that we're going to be releasing, releasing, rather. One three zero seven one West Terabella Street. They're off the, they've been doing their, they've fixed things up to snuff, so now they can be released, is my understanding. Fable will correct me if I'm wrong on that. So now I'll go to my general public comment.
Give him one minute, Madam Clerk.
You will be very pleased, sir, it's not directed at you. This one is, unfortunately, our treasured colleague, Mark Ridley Thomas, who is the Second District Supervisor of the County of Los Angeles. And Taste of Soul this weekend, which I want to encourage everybody to come out and attend. It's a beautiful event, a community event, it's excellent, and people will have some great stuff to eat and have a great time. And I know you'll be there, sir, many others. But Wells Fargo, sir, is on the proud sponsor board, and this is a problem. I have raised this up a number of times. We had a similar instance with the Third District County Supervisor's Office and Herbalife, who put up that pernicious outfit, who had settled their two-hundred-million-dollar problem for fleecing the public. And now we have the same situation with Wells Fargo. So my recommendation, Mr. Harris Dawson, is to simply ask Mr. Bakewell, who's a treasured partner and friend, to either give the hundred thousand dollars back to the County of Los Angeles. You defunded them wisely in June with Mr. Fuhr's advice. But, or, simply ask Wells Fargo to step off for this period. It's not appropriate to have a tent at a big community event with public funding.
Thank you. Okay, I'm just going to continue and try to deal with our general public comment. If I could get Stuart Miller, Ron Boren to come forward, please. Alexander Barber, I believe. One minute each. Identify yourself.
Stuart Miller, CD Two. What I want to bring to the council's attention today, I think, is an issue that has a citywide impact. It's the integrity of the Neighborhood Council elections. There was an election in Studio City, where I'm from, on April seventh. And after, after that election, several of us raised issues related to the way the election had been conducted by Dunn, and the ripple effect of that. Since I only have a minute, I won't enumerate. Our council representative introduced two motions on the subject on June twenty-ninth, and they were sent to the committee that, I believe Mr. Wesson heads, that relates to getting the council to...
Thank you. I will look for those issues, Mr. Miller. So if I could have, I believe it's after that, the next two gentlemen, I'm looking for Greg Appromanian, but if I could have Mr. Boren come forward.
Good morning, Council. Ron Boren. I'd like to address the city on a particular policy. The city of Los Angeles considers itself a city of equality and fairness. However, the city has a policy that provides special rights for a particular group of people. That policy is Special Order Forty, and the particular group that is benefited by this are illegal aliens, who are shielded from immigration laws in the city of Los Angeles. As a citizen in the United States, what special rights do I get from the city of Los Angeles? As an aspiring entrepreneur, what special rights will the city provide me? Will you waive the regulations and fees to start a business? I feel that would be the only fair and equality, equal thing to do.
Okay, thank you. So before the next speaker, members, why don't we actually take the vote on Items Six and Seven? Let's bring them, let's take it together. So remember, members, we're on Items Six and Seven. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
If I could have the next speaker, I'm assuming it's Mr. Barber, followed by Candido, are you here somewhere?
And, um...
You'll be after Mr. Greg Appromanian. Yes, sir.
I've actually, I've prepared something, it might go over...
Now, you get one minute, just here. You're new, so we'll give you your minutes. Start his clock over again.
All right, all right. All right. So, my name's Alexander Barber, and I'm a resident of Los Angeles City Council District Thirteen. Predatory parking enforcement and towing policies being a major source of revenue both for the city and those ever-present initial, ampersand initial, and sons towing businesses that have profited immensely as a result of this bad policy, and the expense for the public good. Having oozed a place alongside other systemic predation upon the poorest and most vulnerable residents of our fine city, such as the for-profit bail bonds industry, the for-profit prison phone system, the payday loan industry, and the California State Lottery, you won't find a tow yard not accompanied by thousands of stories of weary working people, being forced to either pay as much as an entire week's pay to retrieve the family car from the impound lot, or allow for the vehicle to be sold at auction by the city, sometimes costing commuters their ability to get to work. Now, I've prepared a lot more to say than just this, but I've got eight seconds left. My car's stuck in impound, and I'd like to get it back. I have eighteen cents in the bank. That's, that's about it.
Maybe you can get copies of that, and we can distribute it. So if I could have Greg, is Greg here? Please come forward, followed by Candido. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Greg Appromanian, and I'm here today to ask the Los Angeles City Council for sanctuary and amnesty from some of your laws. You have made Los Angeles a sanctuary city, so I think my request is fair. Now, recently, I got a traffic ticket in L.A. And after getting this ticket, it dawned on me, why are Americans expected to follow every single law that illegal aliens in Los Angeles get special treatment, privilege, and sanctuary from the laws that they don't want enforced? You've given sanctuary to millions of immigration lawbreakers, so that they can benefit by avoiding our laws. Why not give Americans sanctuary, so that we can also benefit by avoiding laws? I mean, if they don't have to follow our laws, why do we? I think this is a great opportunity for you to show that you pose double standards for different groups, and you can demonstrate this to the entire country by granting me sanctuary from this ticket. How about it?
Okay, Candido, good to see you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pay the damn ticket, pay the damn ticket, you broke the laws. Mr. President, thank you for your leadership in the Seventh District. Thank you, folks, for being here. You know, as an American, whose family first arrived here in Santa Fe in sixteen-ten, and the other part being Navajo-American, I welcome everyone, as long as you love this country. And as a longtime Republican, I cannot vote for Donald Trump. Why? Because we hear that kind of hatred, where we're gonna, we're just gonna say that certain people are just bad, or they're getting all the breaks. You know, we have to stand together as one country and as one city, Mr. President, because we are the greatest city in the world. And whether it's Donald Trump, or it's a local politician who wants to get back on a Neighborhood Council after saying that she lost the race because too many tacos were in the area, they're discriminatory. And so, I'm not voting for Hillary Clinton, because I think she's the best, it's because I think her vice president is the best, and one day will prove to be one of the greatest presidents in the United States. So thank you, Mr. President. As an American, sixth generation, we welcome everyone.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, Miss, Madam Clerk and Miss City Attorney, that concludes general public comment. I'm going to move to our presentation portion of today's agenda, and I'm going to recognize Mr. Harris Dawson. Mr. Harris Dawson, are you ready for your presentation? Okay, the floor is yours.
Good morning, Mr. President and colleagues. I want to thank everybody here with us in the San Fernando Valley City Hall in joining me in introducing and honoring a true champion of the Eighth Council District. He is an example of a business owner that's turned a passion into profit. In addition to operating a successful soul food restaurant chain, now I guess we can call it, he is the largest caterer specializing in southern home cooking anywhere in the Los Angeles area. Greg Doolin was raised in the View Park area of Los Angeles. He's a second-generation L.A. businessman, following up the footsteps of his father, who was known as the king of soul food, Adolf Doolin, who originally owned the famous Aunt Kizzy's Back Porch Soul Food Restaurant in Marina Del Rey, famous in the eighties and nineties. Two thousand sixteen marks his thirtieth year in business here in Los Angeles on Crenshaw Boulevard. During his time there, he's provided over two hundred jobs to local community residents, and has given back to the community in several different ways. We appreciate Doolin's because it is a community institution, but also something very, very important to me, that we wanted to work on when we got elected to City Council. The Eighth District was one of the lowest district in terms of shoot days for filming. And so, there was a lot of community pushback, and the work hadn't been done to market the Eighth District to folks who scouted out sites. And so, we're, I was very excited to hear and wanted to recognize that ongoing series, the first one in the Eighth Council District called South of Wilshire, filmed nine episodes at Doolin's on Crenshaw, Doolin's on Crenshaw Soul Food Restaurant. This gave both the restaurant national attention, and it gives our community national attention. So people all over the world can see what's happening on Crenshaw, and we can make it a destination as people come to this city. Not only is he an outstanding businessman, he gives back to the community, he has the Big Pancake Breakfast, which raises about five thousand dollars a year for the Boy Scouts, the Debbie Allen Dance Academy's annual fundraiser gala, he is a big sponsor of that, as well as working on breast cancer awareness with the Baldwin Hills Relay for Life Cancer fundraiser. We honor Doolin's and Greg Doolin and his families here today, also because this is Taste of Soul Weekend. And so, all of you invited to join. Council President and Council Member Price and I on Crenshaw Boulevard, this is the biggest, baddest block party anywhere in the United States, right here on Crenshaw Boulevard, in the Eighth and Tenth Council Districts. All day tomorrow, we'll be there, and there'll be live bands and all kinds of food from all over the place. So without any further ado, I want to ask Greg to say a few words to us and introduce his beautiful family who's with us here today.
But you know what, I'm going to stop you, Greg, before you get started. And I would like to recognize Mr. Price. Mr. Price?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank Councilman Harris Dawkins for bringing Doolin's to us. We know Doolin's is a real institution in, not just South L.A., certainly in Southern California, building on a strong legacy, as was mentioned, of your parents and their efforts. And your dad is still a force to be reckoned with. But we're just excited that you've taken the restaurant to another level, establishing a presence not only on Crenshaw, but in your catering, in hundreds of schools and classrooms around Southern California. So we just appreciate your contribution, your commitment, not only being a good businessperson, but also giving back, as you do in so many ways. And so, congratulations, and keep up the good work.
You know, and it's, it, you know, one of the great things about being on the council are the days when we can honor folk and say kind things about those that deserve it. And you and your family are unbelievably deserving. To go back to your dad's, you know, Aunt Kizzy's Back Porch, and the best fried chicken, other than what your grandmother could make, is the best fried chicken was there. And to see you just take this dream and expand it, where your business has catered events throughout the city and beyond, in the county of Los Angeles, the name Doolin's rings throughout this, this area, and a lot of that, I think you have to take credit for. Because even though I know your dad, and he did a great job, I think it's because of your hard work, your business sense, that you've taken Doolin's to another, another level. And so, I want to commend you for that. And Mr. Harris Dawson, I've had an opportunity to see two episodes of the South of Wilshire. So I'm glad to see that the, the people from the television world recognize that we have a lot to offer south of the Ten Freeway, and I would urge everybody to watch the show South of Wilshire. And I want to thank you for opening up your doors to have the, that series filmed there. And with that said, again, members, I'd like to invite you all tomorrow to Crenshaw Boulevard. It is one of the best block parties that goes for several blocks, maybe about two-hundred, three-hundred thousand people. It is a phenomenal event. Some of the best food, because it is like the Taste of Soul, some of the best foods, several stages, religious gospel music, soul, R&B, you name it, we'll have it. So please, everyone is invited. So with that said, again, congratulations, my dear friend and fraternity brother. And Mr. Doolin, I'd like to turn it over to you, sir. In fact, let's give him a round of applause, he deserves it.
Well, thank you very much. I'm almost speechless. First of all, this morning, I'm here with Ms. Carolyn Trader, and my two children, Brett and Alexis. Brett is a recent grad of Howard University, and he works for Booth Allen Hamilton. My daughter Alexis is a recent grad of Spelman College, and she works for Ascensure. So I have two consultants in my family. So, and I need them too. Let me correct Mr. Harris Dawson. They shot sixty-nine episodes, not nine, sixty-nine. Warner Brothers and Fox Television shot sixty-nine episodes at, at my restaurant, right in the main lobby. And sadly, Councilman Wesson, the show didn't get picked up for a second season. But, we got one season of national exposure, and because of that, we have tour buses that come to our, our restaurant, and we have customers that come to Doolin's on Crenshaw from all over the United States.
You're on HBO's Insecure, too.
So, every, I told the mayor that every great city needs good soul food.
That's right.
We have to have good soul food. People come to Los Angeles, or they go to Chicago, or they go to New York, and they look for, where's a soul food restaurant? I had a discussion with the coach of the rugby team from USC the other day, and he told me that the New Zealand rugby team is coming to Los Angeles to do a tour, and that they asked him, where can they find soul food? A hundred twenty big guys. So I'm trying to get them, I'm trying to maneuver them to come to Doolin's on Crenshaw, because I know how to feed a rugby team. Doolin's, my father and parents started forty years ago with a little hamburger stand, and now we have three locations, we have over a hundred employees. We're very proud of what we do, we're very proud of what we do in the city of Los Angeles. We are consistently ranked as one of the top soul food restaurants in the nation. We're the largest caterer in the city of Los Angeles that specializes in soul food. And about eight weeks ago, do you all remember when Delta Airlines had all those issues with flight cancellations and everything? Well, they hired Doolin's on Crenshaw to come in and feed three thousand of their employees at LAX. So we fed everybody in Terminal Five. It was, it was a madhouse, but we got it done. So we, personally, I love what I do. I've been doing it for twenty-eight years, it hasn't, I've never felt like I've had a job. I absolutely love going to work. My kids can tell you that I spent a lot of time at the restaurant. We have the best customers in the world, we operate in the best city in the world, and the best neighborhood in the world. And I thank you so much for this honor, on behalf of myself and my family. Thank you very much.
So on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, the council, and the mayor, and everybody, you've got everybody's signature on this one.
All right, all right.
So when you walk in Doolin's, you'll get to see this big commendation that we give to you today in honor of Doolin's Restaurant.
And Greg, I'm gonna come check. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go make sure you got it hanging on the wall, because I have a taste for the greens and the yams. So I, I think I have to come and inspect to make sure that you have the proclamation on the wall.
Well, I'm expecting to see everybody at the Taste of Soul tomorrow. I have two booths, one in front of the old Walmart, and one in front of Albertson's. And we're trying out a new recipe, we're doing Nashville Hot Fried Chicken. I've never done it before, so you all have to come check it out and tell me how you like it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to turn over the podium to the member from Council District Six, Ms. Nuri Martinez. The floor is yours.
My mouth was watering, I was hoping for some cornbread. No cornbread? Thank you, Mr. President, we're just getting, is everybody up here?
Not yet. I want to... Yeah. I know there's, um, why is people with the... Okay. All right. Good morning, Mr. President, colleagues.
Good morning.
Thank you. I want to, it's my pleasure to introduce and welcome to the City Council this morning the Operations Valley Bureau Human Trafficking Task Force. As you know, I've spent a great amount of time working on this issue, not only in my district, but throughout the San Fernando Valley. And I want to be able to recognize the team that makes it all happen, that helps address some of the sex human trafficking problems here in my district and throughout the San Fernando Valley. And as I've, as I have told you in the past, young girls who are forced into prostitution by sexual predators and pedophiles need to be locked up for good, and this team helps it make, makes it all happen. Today, I'm proud to introduce to you the boots on the ground, and the heroes that are fighting to protect our streets every day. Over a year ago, with the help of Deputy Chief Green, we created the Human Trafficking Task Force, and since then, I have worked with the team to bring pimps and johns to justice. Everyone here risks their lives day in and day out, every time they rescue a victim of sex trafficking, or arrest a pimp or a john, by putting their lives on the line. They have spent days and nights, hours and hours away from their own families, in my district, and probably in some of yours, and throughout the San Fernando Valley, making sure that we can get rid of this disgusting epidemic that is taking over some of our communities. The greatest part of the task force is the fact that they have community involvement. We have asked the community members to help us identify any human trafficking-related crime, that if they see something, if they see something, say something. Just recently, one of our community leaders was able to send the task force photos of a pimp's vehicle through an email address that we have provided the community with, and the task force was able to locate the BMW who kept driving in and out some of these neighborhoods along Sepulveda Boulevard, and had enough evidence to make an arrest. In the last year, we have had two-hundred-and-six community meetings throughout my district. Via this email address, a, a door has been opened to help this unit with more eyes and more ears in the streets due to their efforts and to the community involvement. The vice unit can tell you endless stories on working, on what they've been working on, and what they see on Sepulveda Boulevard and Lancashire. But today, I want to share a quick story with you. Back in July, there was an operation on Sepulveda Boulevard here in Van Nuys, it was about two in the morning, and the officers noticed that there were being counter-surveillance by a female. She looked very young, and the officers quickly stopped her and asked her questions. She turned out to be a fourteen-year-old girl, who had been a sex trafficking victim. And as, as officers began to question her and ask her more questions, she became more cooperative, and was able to lead them to her pimp, who was up the street, in his car, asleep with another female in the car. And he basically put out the fourteen-year-old girl, waited for her to make some money while he was taking a nap. As the, as the officers approached the car, they noticed another female in the car with the pimp, turned out to be a nineteen-year-old girl who was also a sex trafficking victim. And thanks to the, the cooperation of the fourteen-year-old, the task force was able to make the arrest of this dangerous pimp, and be able to rescue these two female victims of human trafficking. I'm always inspired by the officers' ability to switch their roles, between undercover sex workers, to arresting officers, to sympathetic, to a sympathetic year that want to rescue some of these girls off the street. And I want to be able to recognize this team for holding all of us accountable, and making sure that we have the resources to provide them, the money to continue to operate. It's why we fought so hard to ensure that this year's budget included one million dollars to provide the resources, so that this task force, task force can continue to operate. To date, we've more than doubled our pimp arrests. We have now arrested forty-six pimps since the task force began operating in the San Fernando Valley. And while I'm very proud of this collaborative work, a lot of our community efforts and our leaders deserve a lot of recognition, along with our city attorney, and the unit that makes this happen. With no further ado, I want to thank my very good friend, Chief Bob Green, who's here with me this morning, to say a few words and just congratulate him and his team for the phenomenal job that they're doing on rescuing kids off our streets.
Okay, let's give him a round of applause. And, and before the chief, Ms. Martinez, before the, the chief speaks, I think we need to say to you that this council is a better council, just because you're on it. And that you have led us in, in certain areas that I don't know if we would have been smart enough to go in, unless we had somebody like you to lead the way. And this is just one of those instances where you inspire us. I want to commend the, the task force for all of the hard work that they do, and I recognize that they put their lives on the line. And, and, and for all of the good work and the arrests or what have you. But I think even more important, Ms. Martinez, is the work that you've done to put this on people's minds. This is an issue that a lot of people didn't think about, so this see something, say something. The billboard campaign that you were engaged with a few years ago with the County of Los Angeles, a lot of what we're doing now is based on you being the quarterback of that. So I'm going to ask the members to give you a round of applause for your, your good work on, on this issue. So many of us have daughters and granddaughters, and, and they're safer because of you. So with that said, I would like to recognize Mr. Englander, and then Chief, we'll get to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, as I think about the work that you've done, Nuri, this has been an issue that's been going on for years, far before you were an elected official or any of us were here. were here. But you had the political will, the tenacity to follow through and fight, to go after the million dollars, to work with the department, to bring in other experts. Because of your drive on this, it's not just down Lancashire and Sepulveda, but it's become a county-wide issue, where Chief McDonald and now our district attorney Jackie Lacy have established their own teams as well. This isn't a victimless crime, as Mr. President said. These are young girls. As a father, I can't help but get choked up about the fact that we have these victims on the street that are being taken advantage of and their lives ruined. It's one of the most heinous crimes by far than anybody can ever commit. It ruins lives. And what you've done, not just to take these women off the streets and give them a new opportunity and hope, but prevent one from getting on the street in the first place, is recognizing that these girls that are on the street, it's no longer... it's not a crime. These are victims. That the officers that are working alongside you with this task force has been remarkable. And I want to thank Bob Green for all his work and leadership on this as well. But it's taken an army. And what you guys are doing every day is just remarkable. And looking at the numbers that you'd said, forty-five pimps, forty-six pimps that have been taken off the street is incredible. But if you look at the ninety-five percent felony rates and a hundred percent felony conviction rates, that's incredible, because there's no other task force that's ever been able to achieve those kind of numbers. And behind all these numbers, a hundred and seventy-seven johns, three-hundred-and-forty total arrests are victims, are young girls that you're saving. Thinking outside the box, doing things that's so revolutionary, things that you didn't talk about. I know that, for instance, you reached out to experts at CSUN and planning to say, "How can we look at our environment to change the fact that we've set up these streets for these conditions and change it so it doesn't happen in the first place?" More lighting, getting rid of the bushes, literally granular, street by street, block by block, address by address, saying, "We need to not only get these girls out of the shadows, but get rid of the shadows completely," is what you've been able to do. My hat's off to you. And we're all better for it because of you. Thank you.
And Mr. Englander is right. I mean, this ruins lives, but this country is a country based on second chances. And because of the work that you're doing, Ms. Martinez, young ladies that may not have gotten a second chance are getting a second chance. Doesn't matter how many times you get knocked down, it's how many times you get back up. So we want to thank you for helping these young ladies get back up. Mr. Harris-Dawson?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I just want to rise and give a huge, huge thank you to our colleague, Nuri Martinez, for championing this issue for a long, long time, and our law enforcement personnel for leading the charge around this issue. This is a big issue all over this city. And, you know, for me, it's... It's one that's very emotional, because sometimes when I drive to City Hall, I've got to see young children on the street. And to know that there's a concerted effort to actually do something about it, and you've led, I think, this council and this city in doing what we should always do, which is treat all of these girls like they're our girls, because they are. They might not know who their birth parents are or who their family is, but they belong to us. They belong to the city, and we've got to look out for them. And we've got to interdict this kind of activity when it happens. And, you know, folks around the horse, you know me, I am not a lock-'em-up, send-in-the-troops kind of guy. But if you get in your car in the morning or at night, and you drive to Sepulveda or Lancashire or Western Boulevard or Figueroa with the idea that you want to have sex with a minor, by all means, we need to lock you up, and we need to lock up the people that are helping you do that. So I thank you all from the bottom of the heart for everything that you're doing to save this city's children.
Ms. Martinez, back to you. Yes, sir.
So good morning, Council. I'd first of all like to start and thank the Councilwoman. She has been a bulldog on this topic. She really has. And without the support of Councilwoman Martinez and the entire council to fund this detail behind me, none of this great work would have been done. So, Nuri, thank you very, very much. Greatly appreciated. And I'd also like now to turn to the men and women that are making this happen, day in and day out, in the middle of night when we're home comfortable in our homes, in our beds, sleeping. They're out there working to try and get these predators off the street. And none of us looked the handcuffs for the first tool that we use. But when you find predators that are victimizing these young women like they are, it's a very easy transition to go from a pacifist to using those handcuffs and hopefully removing these folks from the street for a very, very long time, based on the criminal activity that they've done. So for all of you, thank you very much. And to the men and women of the task force, I could not be prouder of you and all your accomplishments. So thank you very, very much.
Let's give them another round of applause.
He doesn't want to speak, but I'm gonna put him on the spot. Colleagues, thank you very much for those kind words. You know, my father is ill, so my mind's somewhere else this morning.
Oh, sorry to hear that.
So, you know, I wish I could just... Usually, I get really fired up on this issue because it gets me so upset that we're in 2016 and people think that, you know, having sex with a fourteen-year-old is normal, which it isn't. It's a crime, and absolutely right, Mr. Harris-Dawson, you should be locked up for good. But these men and women, at a time where I don't think we give enough recognition to our police officers in this city, we just don't. We have some amazing courageous men and women in the valley working the streets, day in and day out, especially on this task force, that if it wasn't for them putting their lives on the line every day and switching roles when they have to rescue a young woman, if it wasn't for these men and women, this would not be possible. And the man who leads this task force is Lieutenant Mark Evans, who's a personal friend of mine, a great guy. And I want him to say a few words, because he is the one leading the charge in the valley. And if it wasn't for him and him working with Alexis and me trying to figure out what are the missing components of this, and how do we put the resources together, this would not be possible. So I want to recognize him and have him say a few words, if you may.
This was completely unplanned. But I want to thank the chief and Nuri Martinez and countless other people, especially those behind me. They're the real workhorse of this operation. And I think what this really shows is what can be accomplished when a community comes together and says that something is unacceptable. This transcends all political beliefs. And when we come together, we can really be a powerful force for good. And I'm grateful that I've been able to work with these men and women behind me for the supervisors, Dave Brown, Detective Martin Penner, and I won't name each other officer for a number of reasons, but their dedication and sacrifice has been great. They've put a lot of the things that are priorities in their personal life on the back burner because they are passionate about this assignment. And I'm grateful just to be affiliated with that, and thanks for everyone's support.
Mr. President, that concludes our presentation. We have a number of certificates in the back. We've actually not... This is not the entire task force. They're actually standing off to the side. There's security reasons for that, because they go undercover. But we have a number of certificates for them in the back, so we'll be giving them out in the back of the council chambers. Thank you very much.
No, thank you. Thank you. Just give them another round of applause. We thank you I'd like to call on Mr. David Rue from the Fourth Council District.
Thank you, Councilwoman Martinez. That was a very powerful presentation. Now, good morning, colleagues. And it is... I have the amazing privilege today to make this presentation for charitable giving. For over twenty years, the city of Los Angeles has combined the efforts of a variety of local charitable contributions and a single citywide employee fundraising campaign. The goal: to improve the quality of life for all people in neighborhoods, especially those least among us. This year's effort, known as Give to LA Combined Charitable Campaign, officially began on October 3rd, 2016, and will end on November 14th, 2016. This year, the charitable campaign organized by the Department of Disability and will support diverse causes such as homelessness, environmental issues, education, and poverty. There are many organizations that the employees could donate to, but we have several that are here with us today. We have Stacy Hill Williams, Development Director of the Los Angeles Brotherhood Crusade, and the 2016 Lead Charitable Organization. Thank you, Stacy. We have Elizabeth O'Neill, Executive Director of the Variety... Variety, the Children's Charity. Oh, there she is. Christine Lee, Development Manager from the Asian Pacific Community Fund. Monica Garcia, Public Sector Account Manager from the United Way of Greater Los Angeles. Suzanne Gonzalez, Chief Business Development Officer of the United Latino Fund. And Crystal Gu... Gu... Guipulan, Communications Assistant for the L.A. Trust for Children's Health.
Let's give them a round of applause.
These charitable agencies will raise funds for over four hundred member agencies that they represent. But more importantly, the charitable campaign offers city employees the opportunity to give to the charity of their choice through one-time gifts or payroll deductions. So in reality, we're thanking you. We're thanking everyone who's watching this and thanking all the city employees for your generosity. And now I'd like to introduce Stacy Hill Williams, the Development Director from the Los Angeles Brotherhood Crusade, the lead charitable agency in this year's campaign, to discuss their efforts.
I know this young lady. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good. Good to see you.
Good to see you too. Good morning, President Wesson and esteemed council members. As Councilman Rue said, I'm Stacy Hill Williams with the Brotherhood Crusade. And on behalf of our president and CEO, Sharice Bremont Weaver, we are honored to be the lead agency for the 2016 Give to LA charitable campaign. Thank you, Councilman Rue, for your leadership and understanding the importance of the additional resources that our charitable organizations provide throughout all of your districts in the city. We appreciate you greatly. On behalf of the other ten agencies that participate in this campaign, I would like to thank you for your ongoing support and the thousands of people that we support with the services that we provide in the city. Some of these services are free after-school programs, gang reduction and youth development programs, scholarship and environmental programs, medical research, medical care, homeless services, adaptive bikes for youth, free tutoring, linguistically appropriate services, and services for the elderly, and home care facilities on campuses and health and wellness facilities on campuses throughout the city. We cannot stand before you today without the assistance of the Lead City Agency, which is Steven Simon and the Department on Disability. We appreciate him. So on behalf of the Asian Pacific Community Fund, Brotherhood Crusade, Community Health Charities, Earth Share of California, United Latino Fund, United Negro College Fund, the Los Angeles Foundation on Aging, the Los Angeles Trust for Children's Health, United Way of Greater Los Angeles, City of Hope, and Variety, the Children's Charity, we want to thank the council members and all the city employees of Los Angeles who participated in this campaign for 2015 and helped us raise in payroll deduction and cash $291,000. We look forward to exceeding this amount, because this campaign used to yield over one million dollars. And that's one million dollars that goes right back into services that the city and the city's inhabitants need greatly. So we look for you, council members, to help promote the campaign, to get the employees of the city to donate via payroll deduction, which is a minimum of $2 per pay period, to bring this campaign back to the status that it can be. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you all. Let's give them one more round of applause. And thank you, Mr. Rue. This is very, very important. Thank you for bringing them here today.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, you know, I just really want to thank Stacy. And this is... $291,000 is from the City of L.A. employees. I mean, for all the city employees who are listening to this, it's a big thank you. And it's that payroll deduction that you could easily do every pay period. You could just ask your manager or a supervisor or your HR department and ask, and $2. $2 became $291,000. And I know we've had a bad economy these past couple of years, and Stacy has shared with me that it has dipped down a little bit in recent years. We want to bring it back up. So I want to say, on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council and, you know, on behalf of all the council members, I have the privilege to present this. But we'd love to give to you the 2016 Give L.A., and hopefully all employees in the City of L.A. could participate. Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, to reiterate what Mr. Rue said, if you are a city employee and you would like to give, please chat with your supervisor, and they will make sure that you find out what it is you need to do in order to contribute the $2 per pay period. Thank you again so very much. Good to see you. Madam Clerk, is there any other business before this body?
Council has motions for posting and referral, sir.
So let's post and refer those items.
And the desk is clear.
Announcements, members? Any announcements? Okay, no announcements. Can I ask everyone in the chambers to please rise? Please rise. This is where we do our adjourning motions. So I'd like to recognize Mr. Harris-Dawson.
Thank you so much, Mr. President and members. Unfortunately, today, we ask to adjourn in the memory of two individuals, Mark Leroy Tyree Senior and Mark Leroy Tyree Junior. We lost them a month apart. The dad, Mr. Tyree Senior, moved here, Mr. President, in 1963 from Cleveland, Ohio. Attended local schools, married, had a family, became a member of First AME Church, and later attended Trade Tech, where he got expertise in graphic arts, became the lead sign-maker for Hollywood Park, and eventually retired there. He had a very big family, including his son and his wife. We lost him to gun and probably gang violence this past August. A month and a half before that, we lost his son, Mark Leroy Tyree Junior. He was much younger. He was born... He was only seventeen years old when he passed away. He was attending Anima West Charter Middle School and then New Millennium Secondary School. He had planned to attend my alma mater, Morehouse College, following his graduation from high school. He was best known for having a younger brother, an older brother, Incosi, who was an autism patient, and was remarkable, because even though he was younger, he took over care of his older brother with autism, making sure he was okay in school, making sure he was okay in the neighborhood. We also lost him to gun and gang violence this past June. And so we ask for a very tragic adjourning motions in both Mark Leroy Tyree Junior and Mark Leroy Tyree Senior.
That is a tragedy, Mr. Harris-Dawson. Mr. Englander?
Thank you. You know, once in a while, we get those members in the community that become a postage stamp, significant, something to be named after and have a legacy. And we recently lost one of those. In fact, he was named our honorary mayor of Granada Hills. It was Tuesday, October 11th, that Mike Casey passed away. He was a fixture everywhere, and for many decades, served on numerous boards. You name it, he was there. And from Bank of Granada Hills, Granada Hills Chamber of Commerce, and he was the chamber president from 1982 and 1983, and received the Citizen of the Year Award in 1988 from the chamber. It was Mike who helped really create the hometown feel in Granada Hills and led the annual parade, which became a thirty-three-year tradition. And we'll continue that this holiday season as well. And can't help but think about him as we all go down. And can't help but think about him as we all go down through Granada Hills and the parade. And the annual Chamber Golf Classic, which actually, years ago, in 1996, I believe, was named after him, called the Mike Casey Golf Classic. He had a lot of vision for the community, and it was really about neighbor taking care of neighbor, of taking care of each other, of making it a better place than we found it. Everything he touched had that signature on it. He was bigger than life and as large as the community. And so we not only lost our honorary mayor, but one of the strongest advocates and supporters and mentor, a champion in Mike Casey. And he will never be forgotten. May he rest in peace. Thank you.
Mr. Bloomingfield?
Thank you. I'd like to adjourn in memory of Gloria Mogul, who was a community leader in Woodland Hills for more than 35 years. She was born on August 6th, 1925, passed away on Thursday, October 6th, the age of 91. She was active in the Woodland Hills Chamber of Commerce and the Woodland Hills Homeowners Association. She was the silent force between, behind many projects in Woodland Hills over a long period of time. Just one example of many, she pioneered the Woodland Hills Chamber Community Cleanup by reaching out to students at Chaminade High Schools as well as at-risk youths who would gain community service hours and a sense of belonging to the community. Every Fourth Saturday in September for many years, Gloria and other chamber members gathered at a couple, gathered up with a couple hundred volunteers for a Cleanup Day in Woodland Hills. Although Gloria was awarded the Woodland Hills Chamber of Commerce Community Volunteer Award in 2007, she didn't seek out public recognition, she actually shied away from it. That was not her goal. She was incredibly humble, hardworking, and believed that service was its own reward. She was devoted to her husband, Marlo. Their marriage and obvious love for one another was inspiring for everyone who knew them. Gloria and Marlo set up the Andrea Mogul Scholarship Fund for Taft High School students and would present it annually at the Rotary Club in Woodland Hills. In addition to Marlo, Gloria is survived by her sisters, Helen and Sylvia. Funeral services were actually on Tuesday this week at Mount Sinai Hospital, well, I'm sorry, Mount Sinai Hollywood Hills. May Gloria rest in peace.
So I'm looking to my right side to see if there are any. Mr. Krikorian?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Members, as you know, Los Angeles is the home of large diasporic populations of many countries around the world, including the largest population of Thai-Americans outside of Bangkok. And so it's appropriate, I think, that we adjourn this meeting in memory of the King of Thailand, the longest-serving, longest-reigning monarch in the world, King Bhumipal Adulyadej, who passed away just this week. He was a great force for democratizing Thailand and bringing Thailand from the military dictatorship that it had suffered through for most of its, the post-war period until his reign began. And after having served 70 years in service, he was much beloved by the people of Thailand, both in Thailand and here in the United States. So I ask that we adjourn in his memory and extend our condolences to Thai-Americans here in the San Fernando Valley who attend Wat Thai in Thai Town in Mr. O'Farrell's district and throughout Los Angeles who are grieving the loss of their king.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian. Any other adjourning motions? Members, have a good weekend. Join Mr. Price, Harris-Dawson, and I on Crenshaw tomorrow for Taste of Soul. This council meeting is adjourned.